Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're all ready? Oh, sorry. All right. I'd like to call the August 22nd, 2023 Board Meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
That'll be the September 26th, 2023. School, Board of School Director of Meetings to order.
I do apologize, as this is my first time running a meeting in a while, so. All right. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purpose of rebroadcasting. The following board members are in attendance, except Ms. Alston and Ms. Reese. Next is guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This evening, we have two guests. The first one we have is Methacton High School student civic engagement recognition. So tonight, I wanted to share briefly that our civics education program is alive and well in Methacton. As part of our Future Ready Index Act 35 civics knowledge test reporting requirements, I am pleased to share that 95.5% of our students achieved a passing score in the civics knowledge test. That means that 301 of the 315 students passed with 9.8% or 31 students achieving a perfect score. Those students that received a perfect score were all sent certificates earlier this summer. Another example of civics education working in Methacton School District is through the work of Mr. Ameda, social studies teacher at Methacton High School. He's here along with a student and another guest to share how Methacton students were recipients of the Governor's Civic Engagement Award in 2023. Mr. Ameda?
Thanks, Dr. Zerby. So, is this on? So, just a little bit about the award. There were about 28 students statewide that won the Governor's Civic Engagement Award. 11 of them are around 40% were Methacton students. And that's, so that's pretty impressive, so much so that some nonprofits reached out to them, or some, some other like good government organizations reached out over the summer and said, hey, how did you guys do this? So, just a little bit about what it is and how kids qualified for it. It's a two-part thing. Last year, students in my AP Government classes ran a voter registration drive, and they had to contact, so they were assigned a list of students, and they had to sit and meet and explain the process to register, ask if students would like help registering, offer information on how to do it. And then the other part of that is they had to work as a student poll worker. Montgomery County has a, a pretty good student poll worker program where it's technically volunteer, but they get so many benefits from it. But really, the, the big benefit is to the community, and, and I think we're big believers that, so, you know, Jen, your son did this last year, right? He, he did the, the voter registration drive. Your son is going to be a student poll worker in about six weeks here. I, I think the kids get something out of it because they need the lessons that like, it's good to do things for the community even when they expect nothing in return. I mean, the students expect nothing in return. Turns out, they get a lot. They're getting recognized tonight. The county gives them a little bit of money, things like that. But the, the big takeaway is that they're doing something for their community, they're getting people involved, they're helping run polling locations, they're helping their, their fellow students, you know, learn to register to vote. And, and so that's a great example of, like you said, Dr. Zerby, how, you know, civics education works at Methacton and how it's, we're sort of trying to get it off the pages of a textbook and, and have kids do some active learning there. So, that's it. So, just a real quick, the Secretary of State's Office sent these medals to kids, and I stole, Kristin, my, my partner in crime here, I stole her daughters to show you, but they recognized 11 Methacton students who did both. And so, we'll have another, this year, it looks like we're going to have about 70 kids. Last year, we had 43 in both elections. This year, we'll have about 70 just in the fall, working as student poll workers. So, you can be proud of that. All right?
Thank you so much, Mr. Ameda. And, and for that, if you would be so kind, if you could join us, Kristian DeBryan, if you want to join us as well, want to take a photo, Madam Vice President, we want to do a photo and recognize that. Because I think, you know, aside from the accolades associated with getting recognized by the governor for, for this civic engagement, it's important that we continue the effort, and, and it's clear, Mr. Ameda, that you've done that, and, and we're really proud of your work. Next, under guests and scheduled speakers, we have the M-Awards for 2022-23, presented by High School Principal Dr. Jamie Gravenese. Dr. Gravenese?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I have the pleasure of sharing with you our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, current students, who earned an M-Award last year. There are 405 of them who earned a 93% or greater grade point average. So, in addition to honoring them tonight, we will also be calling them down to the Guidance Office to pick up their M-Award certificates. So, as we go through the list, grade 12, we have them listed alphabetically. Grade 11. Grade 10. We will have this presentation posted to our website, and again, we will be calling the students to receive their M-Awards in school next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenese. And I think in addition to, to that, did you mention about us sending something home to, to parents?
I was going to use my teacher voice and project. We send home notifications to the parents as well as hand the student a certificate for their accomplishment.
Excellent. That was a nice touch that we started just last year, and, and I, I think we got some really good feedback on that, so thank you so much.
Yeah, it's a great award for them. They should be very proud.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Gravenese. That ends guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you. For reports, we will take the student reports following item eight on the agenda, Appointment of Student Board Representatives. Now, let's hear from Ms. Washington. Oh, okay, we will.
She's not here this evening.
That's okay. We will skip that report, and we will move to, Ms. Reese gave her report at last week meeting. Ms. Pergolini, would you like to make a report from the foundation?
Hi, everybody. I'm just a couple of quick things. On September 17th, over 200 people participated, volunteered, and donated and sponsored the Race Back to School Methacton 5K Walk and Run. It was a beautiful day and a wonderful community event, and we raised critical funds to help to support the backpack program, so thank you for everyone that participated. All teachers in applying for funding for our Fall Grant Cycle, the deadline's October 15th, and the application can be found on our website. Our alumni and friends are again working on the Welcome Back Warriors event on Homecoming Weekend on October 20th, and they can, you can visit methactonalumni.org for information on that. And last, we are very excited to announce our hot off the presses, our 2023 Apex Honorees. So, we'll have four categories this year. First are educators, and it's Dr. Susan Angstead, Barbara Griffith from the high school, and Rosemary Miller, who was a Methacton Elementary School teacher who passed away in 2022. Our community advocates are Dave Seminy and Susan Edgren. Our legacy award is going to go to Ida Jane and John Hyzer, and our alumni is Bill Kovaleski, who is a Methacton alumni of 1981. So, we've changed the event a little bit this year. It'll be a cocktail reception, it's going to be November 16th with Bob Kelly as the host, and it's going to be at the Audubon Center at Mill Grove. So, tickets and sponsorship information are now on our website, methactonfoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to say on behalf of the board that we thank you for that first time doing the run-walk, especially because it's supporting the backpack program. So, thank you. It was a lot of work, but I heard it was very successful. So, thank you. Great. And now, we'll hear from Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, and good evening. The 2023-2024 school year is off to a great start. Our students, staff, and volunteers are putting their best foot forward and striving for excellence as one outstanding Methacton community. Today was the first of four training sessions scheduled over the next few weeks to encourage members of the community to volunteer for kid writing at our elementary schools. Today's session was held at Worcester Elementary. The other training dates are as follows. Arrowhead Elementary on October 6th at 10:00 a.m., Eagleville Elementary on October 11th at 1:30 p.m., Woodland Elementary on October 17th at 10:00 a.m. These dates and times can also be found on the district calendar, as well as our Facebook and Twitter. And Methacton School District will have a table at the Lower Providence Township Community Fall Festival on Saturday, October 7th. The event runs from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and is sure to be fun for the whole family. Stop by our table and say hello. We will have some information about our district, our schools, how to become a volunteer, and much more. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hi, and Dr. Zerby?
While I put a copy of this presentation at the table for all the board members, I asked that if you'd just give me an opportunity to turn around and watch the screen, because there's some things on the screen that I can't demonstrate on paper. So, if we could. Good evening, and as part of a brief update on the strategic plan specific with respects to rank, just released today, NISH for 2024 moves us one number forward from 51 to 50 as a district, and then the recent U.S. News and World Report on best high schools reported Methacton High School ranked as 49. That is 49 out of 665 schools. Public high schools in PA placing Methacton School District in the top 7% of high schools in the Commonwealth, and in the top 8% of high schools in the country out of 17,680 schools. As a refresher, let's look at district rank using NISH and compare overall District A ranking with that of a school district that is ranked in the top 10 in the state with an A-plus ranking. As we look closer, we see that Methacton and this comparison both receive A-plus for academics. This is a score representing the student academic performance. But when we compare sports, we compare food, and resources, and facilities, we begin to recognize the areas that we can improve upon to move our overall ranking from an A to an A-plus. That is what we did this past school year with our food services, and is what we're discussing with our Athletic Committee discussions led by District Athletic Director Mr. Smink, and with our work on the update to the Master Facilities Plan and the implementation of the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee work. For historical perspective, over 20 years of district rank, we have seen a high of 11 one time that occurred, and in the same 20 years, we also received a rank of 175. Our 20-year average is about 69, and as you can see, we are doing on, on average, 24 places better in the years 2013 through 2022 compared to the previous 10 years. But I want to remind everyone that while we utilize rank as a metric to grow and improve and stretch ourselves, we must also remember that our success is represented in so many other ways. For example, just look at the Ivy League schools that our students have been accepted to, along with the enormous list of other prestigious colleges and universities all across the country, where we will find Methacton graduates. In addition to our students, we've received awards and recognition in the following. The National Association of Music Merchants Best Communities for Music Education Award, National Merit Scholars Award, PA Citizenship Award, Pioneer Athletic Conference District and State PIA championship, the MIT Research Science Institute Awards, the Danauer Academic and Athletic Awards. Our students annually receive more than 20 million in scholarships and grants, annually perform thousands of community service hours, each science fair, or earn science fair awards and scholarships, annual Skills USA state medal winners, student-run mini-thon raises more than 70,000 annually, the PA Academic Decathlon winners, or National History B winners, PA History Bowl Award winners, District One Sportsmanship Award winners, U.S. Presidential Scholarships Program recognition, recognition from the PA Department of Education for having the first student-run hydroponics farm in the Commonwealth, the PMEA All-State Musicians Reading Olympics Blue Ribbon winners, Pennsylvania Council for Social Studies Innovative Teacher Award winner, Math Counts winner, National Spanish and French Oral Proficiency Awards for Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Award winners, first place in, in 24 math regional competition, outstanding alumni, entrepreneurs, community servants, and CEOs making significant contributions to our society, with 93% choosing to further their education beyond high school. Again, these are just a few of the many reasons Methacton is an award-winning school district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comment on board action items. The board will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. So, I brought this up at the last board meeting, and I would like an update, please, regarding the bills. So, I said before that a number of the bills submitted, the school receives revenue from them, yet money, and I believe, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman's name, says that they don't allocate the amount, the revenue received from the bills to the specific bill, and I'm trying to understand why. Because if you don't allocate the revenue, how can you look at the whole picture about what a certain activity or building costs, like the planetarium or the field trips? And I also am looking at the number of bills that are received and the advertisements for AIDS. So, we all know that it costs about $27,000 for a student to go to Methacton based on the taxes. My, and Dr. Zerby, you and I spoke of this before, I feel that it's, I would like to know, and you can't find this in the documentation, how much are, how much is a special education student receiving versus regular ed versus gifted? Because if you look, there's now six positions being included for, you know, those with IAP, so I, I can't find anywhere how many of the personal care assistants actually exist, and what's the allocation? Does a student receive one or multiple? And how is that then impacting the teacher and the regular ed classroom? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Jim Malik, Worcester. Payment of the bills. The Shaw Bar on Dooley, legal bills, $2,900 for, I guess, June and July. Is there a breakdown of what that was for? Do you have a breakdown that you can tell me? Because absent a breakdown, I'm going to give my little presentation on why I have a problem with that bill. What I handed you guys is a lawsuit you instituted against Jessie Bradbury. Jessie Bradbury. You guys sued her roughly three weeks ago. Who made the decision to institute that lawsuit? Who did it? I didn't hear it at a meeting. I didn't hear any discussion. I didn't hear approval by the board. We just go ahead and file lawsuits, right and left? She won her appeal for security video during a public meeting in a public building, completely wanted, and you guys challenge it. How does that work? Are we going back to right-to-know, you know, Sweet Stevens style here? I mean, where's the accountability of the board to go over this stuff? To present it to the public, to give us public input? Not there. Can anybody explain it? You know, I was at the Finance Committee. I asked Mr. Winters for an explanation about the right-to-know situation and how you went from $975 to 100 grand, and he goes, he's talked enough about it, hasn't said a freaking word about it. The reason you have right-to-know bills is because of stuff like this. Has anybody up front looked at this lawsuit? I mean, I have. You don't have a chance. You're going to lose. How much do you spend on this? Can somebody tell me what's in the bills spent on this? How much this is going, I know what it's going to cost. You did it to me five times. I know what it costs. I mean, you guys, it's kind of despicable.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, for, at this time? I'm sorry, public comment. I apologize. All right. On action items. So, now, we're going to move to the Appointment of School Board Representatives and Administration of Oath of Office. So, we are going to the Appointment of School, Student Board Representatives. We're going to approve the appointment of Methacton High School juniors, Victoria Fan and Sol Martin, as student board representatives to the Board of School of Directors for a term of two years, effective 2023 to 2024 school year. May I have a motion to approve all items under Section 8 as presented? Mr. McGinnis? Do I have a second? Mrs. Purdue? Any discussion? Okay. All right. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Can you please come up front? Okay, thank you very much. Is this on? Can you, can you hear me? Okay. All right, you're, all right, you're going to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Student Representation to the Board with fidelity. To the Office of Student Representation. To the Office of Student Representation.
To the Office of Student Representation.
To the Board with Fidelity.
To the Board with Fidelity.
Okay, Sol, come on up. Are you ready? Raise your right hand. Okay, you're going to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey.
That I will support and obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of student representatives.
Of student representatives.
To the Board with Fidelity.
To the Board with Fidelity.
Congratulations. As you get settled, we, you aren't next on the agenda. So now let's hear from Sol Martin and Victoria Fan as the new representatives.
Good evening, everyone. To begin, school has started. Our first day was the 29th of August, and freshman orientation was on the 24th. At the orientation was also the club fair, which was a hit. There were a couple of new clubs that have just started up. They include the ASA, which is the Asian Student Association, the Relay for Life, and the Strategic Games Interest Group. New in the cafeteria are healthier and a wider variety of food options as a result of the contractual partnership signed with R. Mark. Students seem to be excited about these new additions to their inclusive menu. In addition, the Windy Hill Cafe is a huge success. Students around the school have all good feedback towards the food and the drinks that it offers, as well as the affordability. Next is Ms. Palmer and Ms. Griffith. Existing chemistry teachers at MHS came up with a new idea of a color, of a themed color for each grade, which was a major success. Freshmen were purple, sophomores were red, juniors were blue, and seniors were pink. Each student in their grade were given a T-shirt with their established colors during the first days of school. On September 8th was the Color Wars. These activities ranged from movies, giant games, Mario Kart, bingo, and yoga, to flag football, dodgeball, basketball, ping pong, and volleyball. This war ended with seniors in first place, sophomores in second, juniors in third, and freshmen in last. Not only did it promote school spirit, but it also provided a greater connection between the student body, which was a great start of to the new school year. The Math Acton High School Campus Planning Committee called upon 40 students to volunteer by helping to survey the condition of the Math Acton campus and structure of the buildings and give recommendations for future improvements. Lastly, for those students currently taking AP courses, students can begin to order their
Additionally, the fall sports season has started, but not without a few bumps in the road. During the first week of September, we experienced extreme heat waves, which led to the cancellation of some outdoor practices and games. But not to worry, the Warriors are back on track. The girls' varsity field hockey team has started out strong this year with an undefeated record. They will host their annual Play for the Cure game against OJR, which proceeds will go to the National Foundation of Cancer Research on October 6th. The girls' varsity golf team will enter the PAC individual championships this week, with four members having qualified. Boys' varsity golf will also enter the PAC individual championships and have maintained a high caliber of skill as well, as their losses have all been extremely close scores. The girls' varsity soccer team will be having their senior night tonight, and the 2022-2023 squad received national recognition by the United Soccer of 3.96. This was the highest team GPA in the Pioneer Athletic Conference. The boys' varsity soccer team has faced strong opposition from the PAC and is looking for a chance to record a win. As well, for the second year, the girls' soccer team hosted a dress sale with homecoming and prom dresses, as well as accessories, on September 21st, with all dresses costing $20. This was a huge success. The girls' varsity tennis team has only lost one game in their league, although they did not get their full match schedule yet due to the heat. Both the girls' and boys' cross-country teams are looking strong in their placements of runners. Both are looking forward to regular races, as well as attending notable open invitations such as the Paul Short Run and Lehigh University, as well as the Sardarun Twilight Invitational. They recently attended the Foundation Invitational and Hershey. The girls' volleyball team has looked solid throughout the season, and we will be facing Park Valley and Potts Grove, as well as their, as well as their try match with Conestoga and Great Valley this week. The Math Acton football team will have two consecutive games in the next two weeks against PV and Boyertown, accompanied by both co-ed band and cheerleading, leading up to the big homecoming game on October 20th. All Math Acton sports teams are continuing to push themselves and look to improve their records. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a very nice job, very well spoken this evening, so thank you. I will let you know that, you know, this meeting could go long, so you can dismiss it anytime you want to after this point, so thank you, and congratulations. We will move on to number nine, board minute meetings. May I have a motion to approve all items under Section 9 as presented? All right, Mr. Cleary, Mrs. Cleary, do I have a second? Mr. Rookstool? Okay. May I have all in favor? Wait, sorry, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Any, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. All right, now we move on to fiscal items. Mr. Pickleman. Mr. Pickle. I do apologize.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the same items that were discussed last week, with one addition, which is to approve Mark Sobuck Roofing, Consultant of Luzene, Pennsylvania, to complete the design phase for their Arcola roof project at a cost of $62,700.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items under Section 10 as presented? All right, Mr. Winters, may I have a second? Ms. Graff? All right, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Cleary?
I have a question. Can we talk about the new playgrounds, Eagleville and Woodland? Was not at the Finance Committee meeting, and I didn't hear it last week. I'm looking just for an explanation on why they're being replaced. Are the playgrounds on a schedule so that they get replaced every number of years? Like, why is that being done?
It's being done as a, as a review. We've had an outside contractor come in and review the playgrounds at the elementary level. We started with the replacement of a playground in the new construction at Arrowhead, and then followed with a new playground at Warsester. And, you know, there are some pieces of equipment over time, for example, at Eagleville, that have been, had to be removed because of damage and unused, unusability. So the idea behind the changes here with our four elementary schools is, not only it's time for replacement and maintenance, but it's also a good opportunity for us to bring in new, more accessible equipment for students.
Are the school, just to follow up, are the schools on a rotation so that?
We are not.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, there were some questions related to Mr. Bricker. The question, I think we tried to answer this last time, but the principle of revenue being on the list of bills, but can you explain the differences and a little, shed a little light on that question?
So revenue would be categorized in the revenue. Previously, we had put revenue onto an expense to offset it. So if I spent $100 and I got $100 of revenue to offset it, it would net to a zero expense. Our new auditors do not want us to do that. We went back and actually restated all of 22, 2021, 2022, and can follow that process through in 2223 and will continue to, where revenue is separated out from the expenditures.
Are there reports that help explain that?
There's the revenue report where you can get the information. Does it break it down to every source of, of revenue? No, we actually have that as miscellaneous revenue or other student activities, depending on what's going in.
I think there was also a question about the total cost related to the planetarium. Can that be found somewhere? Mr. Bricker?
That's on the Master Plan Financials, which is part of the property committee agenda and also part of the Finance Committee's agenda.
Okay. Dr. Zerby or Mr. Regina, can somebody speak towards the PCAs and the requirements for PCAs?
Yeah, the PCA requirements are done based on IAP requirements in the school and specific needs of specific students. So if it's a BCBA that's needed, it may not be an internal hire. If it's not a BCBA, it is something that we do in-house.
And associated, I'm not sure if this was the question, Mr. Bricker, there was a question related to the cost per regular ed versus the cost for special ed. Is there a place that can be seen?
We do not calculate it in that manner.
What, what about on the charter school reimbursement?
The state assesses a rate for a regular ed roughly about $17,000, and they assess a fee roughly about $40,000 for special education students.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the, the non-matching of revenue to expenses, is that gap, or is that unique to public entities?
So we don't break it down to each individual fee at this point in time. Like, I don't have a student activity account to go, there's no, student activities won't have an expenditure to go against. It's just a fee that we charge. We don't break it down that far. It's less than $100,000, so it really is immaterial and $126 million. We have discussed about breaking the fees down further, and we're actually evaluating that for this next year.
So the immaterial aspect of it was the recommendation of the auditor?
The auditor was against offsetting the expenses, saying, on a single account code. So if you look at every activity account, every activity account now has income and expenditures. They don't, you don't offset your expenditures with your income anymore. So account, an account code would not, would only have the expenditures in it. It would not have the revenue and expenditures in it any longer.
Okay, so maybe my first question was poorly worded. That specifically, is that following GAAP, or is that unique to public entities? Why is that recommendation? I'm just curious, to be candid with you.
Our prior order did not require it, our new auditor does.
And we do what the auditor says.
And we do what the auditor says.
Okay, 10 for. Thank you.
The one thing I would add to, though, Dr., I apologize for calling you the wrong name, by the way. I'm sorry. Can I ask you, though, one thing that when we have to look at the special ed exemptions, like when we look at it every year, don't we have a total amount of what we spend in special education? Because we do show, like, it increased over $1 million almost year after year. So even though we may not have a cost per regular ed, gifted, and special ed, we do have an idea of how much the costs are for special education, correct?
There's a calculation as part of the Act 1 exceptions for special education expenditures. They run a year behind. We're in the process of completing those forms now.
But to Ms. Cancro's question is, we have a total cost of the special education program on an annual basis that's audited.
Yes, correct.
Yes, we just don't break it out by student. And it can be found in the past audit reports that are listed on the district website.
And the AFR.
Yep.
I think it is important just to say, because we do have over 900 students that are on, whether it's special education, gifted programming, and so the costs are increasing year after year. So that is a very important thing to note, so. Any other? All right, we'll take a vote, then. All in favor? All, any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. We will now move on to personal items. Dr. Sorjini? Personnel, I apologize, personnel.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Vice President, for the board's approval this month of the personnel items as presented last week at the work session with the following additions. One additional change of status classified, Odell Dewald, from custodian at the high school to grounds person at the maintenance facility. We thank Odell for taking on this new role. Several additional supplemental contracts for the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department, additional activity sponsors, Tatiana Machado for assistant girls volleyball coach at Arcola, and detention monitors at the high school, Arcola and Skyview. And one addition to the classified substitute list, Margaret Ulrich, as a support staff casual on-call. We welcome Margaret to Math Acton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to, may I have a motion to approve all items under Section 11 as presented? All right, Mr. McGinnis? Do I have a second? Mr. Rookstool? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero.
I could just take a moment. I want to congratulate Dr. Jamie Gravenese, being named the new Director of Pupil Services from Math Acton School District. Dr. Gravenese?
We're excited to have you. All right. All right, we'll move on to curriculum and program. May I have a motion to approve all items under Section 12 as presented? All right, may I have a motion? Sorry, Mr. Winters, a second? Mr. McGinnis? Any discussion? Okay. And are we, are we voting on this number 12? May I have a motion? I'm sorry, I apologize. All in favor? Ms. Graff? Oh my God, I am so sorry. I was used to, I apologize. All in favor? Motion carries, seven to zero. I apologize. I was actually just waiting for someone to present it, and that was my fault. Sorry about that. All right, policy, we'll move on to policy. There are no items for approval this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to other. May I have a motion to approve all items under Section 14 as presented? Okay, Mr. McGinnis, can I have a second? Mr. Winters? Mr. Winters? Any discussion? Okay, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, the next is dates for board members' calendars. Dates are listed and online to review at mathacton.org. All right, do we have any old or new business? Yes, Mrs. Purdue?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Gravenese, and congratulations on the new position. I know it's going to be a big change for the high school. I think your time there was really valuable, and you stepped in and really took over supporting our high school, and we are really going to miss you there. But I think this position also, I wasn't here for the interviews, but based on the feedback that I heard, you were the best candidate for this position, so we are looking forward to having you in that position. And I just want to say a warm welcome to our student board reps. Thank you all, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, and I do agree. Any other? Yes, Ms. Cleary?
So for purposes of new business, I'm hoping that the administration will think about the use of acronyms in presentations, in finance reports, in even the way we speak. So what I'm trying to get at is, I've heard the feedback in the community, I have the same feedback since joining the board in April, that community members can be lost in what we're talking about because we're so acronym-heavy. So if we could be, if the, if the administration could find a way in presentations, for example, there's a presentation, and I wrote down a couple tonight, BCPA. I had, I still don't know what it is, but if you, if that word was in a presentation, maybe you write it out, and then in, just once, in parentheses, put your acronym, then use your acronym going forward. I would think in finance, we could do something at the bottom of reports or on the, on, as an attachment to every one, for instance, ESRS. And so somewhere in small print at the bottom, have it what that is, or on the back as an attachment. It's just something I want us to think about and try to find a resolution to, because I am personally struggling, so I can only imagine what everyone else is dealing with. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cleary. We will take that into consideration and figure out how we can better improve that communications.
Thank you. Is there any other old or new business? All right, we will move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You could also submit questions via email to information@methacton.org. Sorry, forgot my class. Okay, Sheila Smith, Lower Providence.
As we enter the second, oh, sorry. As we enter the second month, I would like to discuss several topics that impact our children, educators and the community. First, I just want to go, 20% of students in Pennsylvania are, actually, let me see, Pennsylvania actually ranks 37 out of 50 for education, and Pennsylvania ranks number two for children with special education. And in Methacton, to your point, Ms. Cancro, 20% of our children are receiving IEPs, 504s and special needs. So, with that, I really feel that there should be an in-depth discussion around, really, what is, I know there's workshops, I've been to them, but really, as a community, when you look at, and that makes sense, about 40% would go to special needs, that we really understand what are the services? How are these services being administered? And what is the impact? Because I have received a lot of feedback, I've actually spoken to about 15 teachers recently, around inclusion classrooms, and how the impact of these inclusion classrooms. So, I really would love the board's position, because the fact is, what is on paper is not happening in the classrooms. You will have a student with special needs that could have two caregivers, excuse me, I don't know the language, but two caregivers, and honestly, it's not helping the classroom. And as a result, a child will be disruptive for half an hour, 45 minutes, which takes up the whole period, and then other students are impacted. And this isn't a one occurrence, this has been ongoing. There has been situations that occurred in Arrowhead last year, in Skyview, Arcola, the high school, and it's not a one-time occurrence. So, I just want to really think that an in-depth conversation is warranted. I also just quickly want to address Dr. Zerby's comments. Look, Methacton is a great community. However, you can't address, you can't fix what you don't address. Dr. Zerby, you selectively choose what resources you want to leverage. So, School Digger still has a 30 decline, and has Methacton School District at an 87. So, I could go point by point about each one of those sources. So, I just think, again, we can celebrate, but we have to look holistically at all the opportunities. And I think we still have, we do not meet standards with this, within math and English and reading, and we still have opportunities around our academic ranking. So, I really look forward to having deeper conversations around them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Moskowitz, I have, excuse me?
You're going to just state your name and your municipality, too?
Lower Providence, Daniel Moskowitz. I have, I have two kids in the high school. Here, asking for some guidance, some suggestions, and maybe some discussion about the school internet policy. I know this is a little nerdy, but the school gives Chromebooks to most of the kids in the district, and I think that's a great thing, helps them with computer literacy. But those, those devices have a connection to the internet, and that's both in the school and at the home, you know, for the most part. And those devices do have some access restrictions on them, but, you know, the kids are very smart and have a wide network at the school capable of circumventing the school's access. So, if you're not familiar with what glitch.com is, that's the last one your kids are, that was blocked a couple of weeks back, but that's one of many VPNs that kids have used to bypass internet controls on these devices. My request, my hope is, as I was trying to work through my own son's IEP, for example, he's having trouble with addictive issues with the computer, as sure many of the kids are, with YouTube in particular, and there's no parental controls on these things. The school district has some controls that they put in, but it's not open to the parents, even when it's in my house. So, the content that kids can get in, when they do use a VPN, when they go around the school's access, is completely unlimited internet access. That's not just, you know, pornography or violence or something like that. I've had issues with my son, you know, watching Youtubes that get into a lot of, like, very offensive misogyny and reverse racism. This is not stuff that I think he should be exposed to. Now, I understand, you know, we want our kids to grow up to be online and understand how to deal with that, but there's a reason we have age restrictions around some of this content, and I think it's the school district's responsibility to put a little bit more effort into controlling the devices that they give to all the kids. So, my hope is that, you know, I have tried to do this through the school, through my kid's IEP, that we can have a little bit more discussion about what access could be given. I think ideally, the correct solution is like a whitelist or approved list, where the internet is basically not trusted. And then, the teachers can write a little form that says, please add this website, and then it would be a trusted website for the whole district, for, basically, for all time, in case, in case there's a problem. But if someone on their home creates a website and puts it online, that the school district would by default block it, instead of, right now, by default allow it. When the school district by default allows everything on the internet that it doesn't know anything about, it will constantly be bombarded with new content and new ways around its own access controls. So, I would love to discuss further. I've been, I'm trying to find a partner in the school district to work with this. I know it's a little technical, but I'd be happy to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Could you, could you do me a favor? Dr. Gravenese, high school principal, would you make sure that you get, you give her email, your email address to her, so we can reach out to you?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Pickelman, I mean Jim Malick, Warsester. You're doing good tonight, Jen. Dave snuck in that little ranking propaganda. I went to the internet to check out what the agenda is, wasn't on the agenda, there was something there for Audubon. So, but you forget the most important timeframe interval to measure. The time right before your team, your bosses, the people who you're trying to make look good, got in and present, right? So, I'll give you an example, your U.S. News and World Report, 11, right before they got in, and 49, you know? So, it's still the same. It's still the same. So, you have a lot to work on. At the last meeting, I alerted the district to money transfers involving the Methacton Education Foundation. Dave, you made reference to being subjected to comments creating some kind of hysteria around possible wrongdoing, and that taxpayer money was not involved. Wait, you're wrong. The auditors are paid by the taxpayers. You are, Bricker is, his staff is, and all of you people were involved in all these transfers, right? The point was, why didn't you tell us about it? So, my question to you is, why did you do what you did, and why don't you want the money in the general fund? And are the auditors, are these the guys who left us with, like, little notice that you're talking about? Or are you talking about the new auditors? So, you know, I have my thoughts about the old auditors. Now, you mentioned hysteria, I'll give you some more hysteria, you like hysteria. The foundation claims that they are not political. They also claim that they're independent from the district. You didn't inform the public that there was a political dispute between the Larsonese Board and the foundation that resulted in several school board members boycotting the 2021 Apex Awards. I'll give you Mr. McGinnis's email on this. I will not be attending the Apex Awards after seeing the MEF, that's Methacton Education Foundation Leadership, organize, support and fund a group that is antithetical to everything DEI stands for. I can no longer support the foundation. They've shown themselves to be who they are. We should listen. What's that about? You've got an independent 501(c)(3) organization, and you don't like their politics? You don't like that somebody did a fundraiser for the opposing candidates, and then you boycott it and come up with a ridiculous email like that? Even worse, you got Ms. Larsonese doing the same thing, and then she's setting up a meeting with you through your secretary to go over all this. That's not hysteria. That's like, what the heck? Maybe you can explain all the politics involved with an organization that's supposed to be totally apolitical.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy at the floor?
Jim Beam, Warsester. I just want to thank Ms. Cancro. I feel like we're on NASCAR tonight. I've not seen a board meeting move like this in a long time, and I don't think there's any of you who are disappointed in that, and I don't believe any of the rest of us are either. So, while you did kind of speed through things and maybe miss a word or two here and there, I think it's very well done, and it was refreshing, and so I congratulate you. I also want to congratulate Ms. Cleary. I don't want to say you stole my thunder, but what I really was going to comment on tonight is what you commented on, and that is the continuing lack of transparency. And I do not ascribe any ill will about this, but I spoke about this before, and Ms. Cleary beat me to it tonight. But we are speaking, you're not, you know, we have an, for the community members who are out here, you can, those of you who are on the camera can see, there are a few people here, there are not very many people here, but there are a lot of people in the community who watch these meetings. It's part of life now, they don't come out, but they watch, and so, we have to communicate with everyone, and getting rid of acronyms, speaking in plain language, communicating clearly. Again, Ms. Cancro, thank you for what you said about the cost with special education. It's very important. We spend a ton of money on special education, and we need to. It's very important. But communicating more clearly and effectively with our constituents, our community, is most important, and I hope we can do a better job of that going forward. Dr. Zerby, I appreciate what you said at the end of Ms. Cleary's remarks, and I really anticipate and look forward to you all taking that very seriously going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy at the floor? Any comments at all for courtesy of the floor? All right, so we'll move to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis, do I have a second? Ms. Cleary? Okay, all in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned at 7:58. Have a lovely evening, everybody, and thank you for my patience with me.